Newton.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Hamilton. Ackerman.
Here.
Corvoso.
Here.
Gonzalez-Parver.
Here.
And Chair Piramont.
Here.
Are the mics on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are they working? Yes.
Not on here.
How about that?
One, two, three.
No.
That's fine.
We're taking short breaks to...
We've been hearing.
But they, um, it's the, it's the video we want to be in. We're broadcasting, so other members of the public can watch if they can't be here in person. So we'll see if we can solve their, take a short recess and see if they can solve it.
It looks like it shows like it's handling.
You wouldn't want it to be off filter. It could make you dizzy. You could pass out. I'm like that, too. It's a little bit of OCD. Things have to be conscious at all places.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Oh, don't be upset.
Okay.
I like a little OCD.
Okay. I must hear.
Do you want to try it again?
I don't know. I'll come.
Test it.
Test it. Test it.
Testing. 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 Testing.
Testing. Testing. Testing. Testing. Madam Chair, perhaps we could get going. I could give you my report before we get into Mr. Rothman's presentation. That would give him a little extra time.
I think that's all.
Before we could also do the situation as part of the consent process. And the consent calendar first, of course.
Okay. We'll do the consent calendar and then we'll do the planning director's report. And then hopefully our audio problems are fixed and then we can do the, the, um, the presentation. So, um, I guess we'll, we'll, we'll change the agenda.
Sure. And also then you'll go and play a call on the public.
Okay. So we can, um, change the agenda. Change. All in favor? Okay. So, um, we're going to follow Robert's rule of order. We have the meeting phone call, the study, um, and the agenda and the schedule. So I think when we do open the... Today's, uh, what? How many people would like to think they might want to, um, to speak when we open a public hearing on the discussion of... Anyway, we'll, we'll, I think that's what we did last time, is, 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 is two minutes. So, um, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay. So now we're going to move on to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. Nine Chester Avenue and 120 Laurel Drive. So, um, does staff report on those items? Hope you speak. Just check and make sure there's no one in the audience that wants to discuss.
Or any questions from the commissioners?
Okay.
No objection to the, the project per se. I just have some, um, lack of recommendations to change the reservation.
Okay.
Um, I can think the project is, is, um, so, and then once you just make one change, you, um, you have the 1604.
Excuse me, because I don't see the time as 1604. Is it 1607 and 1608?
It's the, it's the...
Oh, the resolution. Okay. Which address is this?
Nine Chester.
Nine Chester. Okay.
Um, paragraph two of the resolution, um, there just is a long sentence there that starts with structure that defines, um, uh, restrictions for the Art 5.5-7, um, on contract versus physical or economic effects and potential change, economic effects to adjoint property or premises in the end goal. Um, and then, one of this is what I learned after California, um, and, um, then I think I would, I would recommend with paragraph six, um, to, um, just before paragraph two, logically, what we say doesn't cost the paragraph seven, but there's, that's the fact of that is what paragraph six talks about. And those are my changes.
All right. I got those.
Through the chair, I just had a question for staff on, um, on the art studio. When was that constructed? Do, do we know? There was no mention of that in the staff report that I saw.
Well, you'll have to ask the applicant. It was pretty much, you know, it's, it's a prefab, so it was pretty much built by the time we, it came to our attention.
I'm sorry. You've got to come up to the mic to speak. You want to hit the button right at the bottom of that? Just push it once. There you go.
Thank you. And, and 120 square feet does not require a permit, right?
It does not require a building permit, but it still requires planning permits.
And so is this like a retroactive action that we would take?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Just to clarify.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there anyone in the public who wants to make a comment on those two items?
Okay. So I guess we can close and then would someone like to make a motion to approve these consent items?
I so move. Oh, are we talking both of them or just...
Yeah, we do both of them at one time.
That's right. Actually, I'm sorry, through the chair. I did have one question on 80 Laurel or, yes.
120 Laurel.
120 Laurel. I noticed in the additional set of plans we received that there is a, a bathroom elevation and layout, but there's no work being done to that bathroom, is there?
No. What I, what I had to do, because I had some challenges with this applicant, is I had to take a set of plans that were for their addition in their bathroom to give you elevations, showing you what the house looked like. The only thing that's happening is the existing rear deck is being covered and screened in.
The cover on the deck.
Yeah. Everything else is already there.
Okay. Because they were more extensive than what I had originally seen. With that, I have no problem and would move approval of both of the consent items.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No? Okay. So, um, I guess we'll, since we arranged the agenda, we'll still, we'll continue with the planning director's report and then we'll go on to the, um, the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. And you asked me back in February to give you an update on what happened with the marijuana cultivation ordinance that you all passed. And if you recall, I wasn't in the lead on that. It was council-driven, so our town manager Garrett Toy was here and walked you through the motions on approving by resolution.
Jim, may I interrupt you for a moment?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Just a point of order. Do you want to just confirm for anyone who is here for the two consent items that it's approved?
Ah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mimi. So, um, nine Chester and 120 Laurel have been approved by the commission. There is a 10-day appeal period for anyone who so may want to appeal it to the town.
For $500?
For $500 fee. But you've been approved by this body, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, I understand the audio is not working.
It is. We're on. Oh, great. Okay, great. So again, anyone here from nine Chester Avenue or 120 Laurel Drive, they've been approved on consent. Okay. So back to the report. You asked me back in February to give you an update with, on what happened with the marijuana cultivation ordinance that you, um, you approved by resolution. And if you recall, our town manager Garrett Toy was in the lead on that with you all. And then he took it up to the town council after that, and it actually did not get passed. They discussed it quite a bit and made a decision to actually do a public survey on the town's website. So if you go to the town's website, there's a survey link where they're asking folks in the public to comment on not only cultivation, but delivery service of medical marijuana and also Airbnb. So I've been tasked to come back to you in April and give you an update on the results of that online polling, which we invite the public to participate in, again, for cultivation, delivery, or Airbnb regulations, which at this point we don't have any pending. And the caveat on the cultivation ordinance is that we don't know yet whether there'll be recommended changes by staff to what you all approved. If there are no recommended changes, then it'll go back to council if appropriate. If there are recommended changes, then it, of course, will come back to you for revisions before it goes up. So you can view the most recent cultivation ordinance that went up to town council on the archived meetings of the town council. And the disposition of what's going to finally go up to council again is still pending, depending on the results of the online survey. Any questions on the cultivation?
Through the chair, can you remind me of what happened with the time constraints that the town had been under to adopt that?
I think that became moot when the state backed off the very short time period that was required when we first started this exercise to either get on the books with the town's own cultivation ordinance or lose the opportunity to do so. I think that went by the wayside, and I think it actually caught everyone by surprise that the state acted so fast to relax that, that timing. That's my understanding. And again, I haven't been the lead on this simply because there's been so much going on, and it's basically council-driven at this point. But I'll come back in April with the results of the survey, not only on cultivation, but on delivery service, which I have been asked to start to work with our assistant town attorney, Katie Wazinski, in drafting. And because the previous Marin Alliance for Medical Marijuana had actually gotten approval for delivery service and their conditions of approval when they were revisited, we'll be sort of taking a lot of that boilerplate from her conditions of approval into a draft, along with the recommendations from, or along with the comments synthesized from the public in terms of delivery service. And again, also with regards to Airbnb. So that was, that was the update on that. Then you also asked me to update you on your priority list for ordinance modifications. You recall last year, before the budget, I asked you to sort of distill among the long list of wish, wishful changes, the top priority, and those were at that time, in order of importance, second unit and amnesty ordinance updates, development standards, specifically how to count floors in the residential hill zone, green building ordinance, three, four, parking requirements in the residential zones, five, the tree ordinance, so that when you grant, remove, so that you can grant the removal of the tree without it having to go to the tree committee, which will require some vetting and thinking through. And then lastly, the elimination of the APN numbers in the table, the tables in the different zoning sections. So in regards to those three, I can report that we have at least accomplished the junior second ordinance that went into effect on March 5th of this, of this month. And we intend to bring the second unit and amnesty ordinance updates to you towards the latter part of summer. The three, two, four, five, and six, or two, two, four, and five, the development standards in terms of floors, how you count them, parking requirements of zone, and the tree ordinance, I'm hoping we can do that in one fell swoop, because it's going to require our attorney to go through to each sections and just tweak specific language. It isn't a wholesale modification of those ordinances. So at some time, when time allows, I see number two, four, and five coming back to you in one package. With regards to green building ordinance, I'm happy to say that our Marin Climate Energy Partnership Committee that I chair, we've actually had some fantastic presentations on not only the update to the CalGreen, which is, you know, the building code now has a section in it about green standards, and it's gotten more onerous each update of the building code. And we also had a presentation by the Build a Green Zarina, and she's trying to figure out with the most recent revisions of CalGreen, how an entity like the town of Fairfax would craft a green building ordinance vis a vis the most recent regulation uptick with green building standards. So I am making progress on what we eventually will bring back to you with regards to green building ordinance. And then lastly, the elimination of the APN, the assessed parcel numbers in the tables, which at this point have priority over the zoning map, and the idea is to give the zoning map priority, because the APN tables are not always accurate. Sometimes different parcels show up in two different sections of the code. And lastly, the APN numbers get changed unilaterally at the county level, so it's very hard to keep track of accurate APN numbers. So the zoning map, once it's finally changed and we go through each section of the code, will have precedence, and the, the tables will disappear. So just to show you why we haven't made as much progress since last summer as we would have liked on this, we have been quite busy in the last nine months. As you know, we brought on a zoning technician because we're so short-staffed. We did a special town council-sponsored workshop on the wall property on October 22nd, which is a standalone special event, in addition to the prior and tonight's presentation by Mr. Rothman. We held a special town forum, general plan town forum, the number three as a matter of fact, on rezoning all highway commercial to central commercial properties. And as you know, we've been working on the details of that ordinance change, and that was called for in the housing, 2015 housing element update. We held a special planning commission workshop on the Lutheran Church and Fairfax market opportunity, housing opportunity sites, per the housing, 2015 housing element update in November. We also updated, and you all approved by resolution, the water conservation for very low-flow toilets, and that was passed just at the last council meeting this month. We also modified the emergency housing, sorry, emergency homeless shelter onsite management provisions, which was one of the State Department of Housing Community Development's stipulations for staying compliant with our housing element. We, you all passed, and the council passed, a streamlined permitting process for small rooftop solar energy systems, less than 10 kilowatts. And as I mentioned, we passed the junior second ordinance, uh, junior second unit ordinance, and you all passed the, the first cut of the cultivation for medical marijuana. And the priorities going forward, and again, I don't always have control of my time, because a lot of this is dictated from either the town council or other state requirements and whatnot, but our main goals at this point are to rezone all the highway commercial properties to central commercial, rezone the three properties targeted for planned development district in the housing element, approve, uh, process, and hopefully approve the resources for community development, affordable senior housing project at the old Christ Lutheran Church site. As you know, we're targeting three town-sponsored workshops going forward that'll be on the council's table in April to approve a work program, and we envision those happening in June and the beginning of August, and in October, culminating in a draft town center plan in December. And that's also called for in the general plans town center element. And part of that process will also be to explore managed parking strategies. If you recall, there's been a lot of leakage of downtown parking into the neighborhoods. There's been a lot of discussion about charging for parking when it's at peak periods to sort of capture the bicyclist and outside community coming in. Very controversial subject, but we'll weigh, weigh into it in the town center plan workshops. And then also revisiting and confirming the parcade improvements plan, which was actually passed by town council in 2010. It's been quite a while now. We did arrange to get about $300,000 in grant funds, which are waiting to be used. We are going to put in $100,000 in like funds, and we just want to make sure people are comfortable with the plan that was adopted six years ago now, with, with improving the sidewalks to crosswalks on the parcade. And then lastly, the new or updated ordinances, as I mentioned, new second unit ordinance, or updating the second unit ordinance, updating the second unit amnesty ordinance, which has lapsed, the medical marijuana delivery ordinance, the medical marijuana cultivation, and potentially the Airbnb. And then lastly, linking all these three that I mentioned out of your priority list to get back to you with the updates there. So that's where we are. It's, you know, for, for basically three full-time employees, and now half a zoning tech and one quarter of an admin person, we stay very busy, because this is all in addition to our day-to-day permit processing, code enforcement, building plan check, yada, yada, yada. So we stay very busy in our department. Any questions?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. All right. That would conclude my report.
Okay. So I guess we can move on with the agenda, with the presentation by Mr. Rothman.
Yeah. And if I may introduce this, this is the second time that Mr. Rothman has come back to us. I believe it was in January. That was after the, the main public workshop that was noticed every way we knew how. And, uh, Mr. Rothman heard some of the things that were said last time, I believe, and also in terms of the graphic presentation, and I think we may have to prompt this to get it going, but Marshall's going to walk us through his most recent thinkings. And I just want to reiterate that, Bruce, can you give us a hand for a second? I'm sorry. Well, the projector, I think, has gone off. It's awesome. So I just want to reiterate for the public that's here, the public that's home watching, there has been no formal application on this project submitted. This is pre-development, pre-application discussion, and I want to thank Mr. Rothman for participating in the October 22nd major forum and for coming back in January and for coming back tonight. And the object of this exercise is to give him a chance to share with you all what his thinking is, and for you all to weigh in early with any red flags that you feel are out there, and to hopefully guide the process forward in a truly public participatory approach. So that's why we're here tonight. And I might add, this aside from the commissioner's comments and requests, is the last thing on the agenda tonight. So this is the main show. I'm sorry?
Thought we had another item about the size of our...
Ah, thank you. Forgive me. That's right. We do have another item. Thanks, Mimi. You're so good. About the size, having reduced sized plans submitted in addition to what we usually get. So with that, Mr. Rothman.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission, and Jim, and Linda, once again, for the record, my name is Marshall Rothman. I am the managing partner of the group that owns the, what's known as the wall property. Thank you again for hosting these sessions. They have been incredibly helpful, and they've helped us craft what we believe is a win-win, but, you know, there's always room for improvement, and we're here tonight to see if there isn't, aren't any, isn't any more input. You will recall firstly, at the last session, that we were thinking that we were going to come in, can everybody hear me all right? We were thinking we were going to come in with three separate applications on three different parts of the, of the property. I don't mind telling you now that that was not my first choice, and I've revisited that with my partners, and we are now on the same page, and we'll be coming in with one application for the entire property. It simplifies things. It gives me more latitude as to moving around the open space parcel and increasing the size of it. And it, it just makes more sense from a redundancy of effort and cost standpoint. You will also remember, recall from the last session that people were having quite a lot of difficulty figuring out where their properties were in relationship to this property, and you'll notice that this map is cocked on, on the side. The reason for that is that that's the same orientation of the, the other map, which is the US, it was Marin Maps overhead view, so that it's easier to translate. And we have large copies on the wall and also some smaller copies in the back for people if they'd like.
And Marshall, can I throw in there, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason you have this turned sideways is because this is more north-south oriented, and it also mimics the aerial that you can toggle back and forth to. And last time, you didn't have the southeastern, what was that, 14 acres on the same map? So you've combined those maps.
Right.
You've also highlighted the roads, and so the road on the lower left is Sir Francis Drake, correct?
That's correct.
And then you can pick out your own individual roads. And then I'm sure you're going to walk us through what it all means.
Oh, yeah, I will. We, I tried to bring everything out better, because the Marin Maps, while it's very good, and while our topo is, is not as good, we still, it was difficult to see which streets were which, so we tried to bring them out and highlight them and label them so that it's easier to see. One of the benefits, and now, as Jim has correctly pointed out, the parcel at the bottom there, the, the larger parcel, which we call the Ridgeway parcel, portion of the property, was not on the maps at the last session. It now is, all of the property is. And that parcel is 14 plus or minus, probably a little bit more than 14 acres. And I mentioned that it gave, that one application gives me more latitude, and one of the ways that it gives me more latitude in steering the project is that the parcel per zoning only needs 10 acres, which gives us in excess of four more acres that we can, that we can use to, to improve the open space trail parcel, move some, and understand also that these, these, these lines are going to adjust a little bit when we start to get to the point where we're going to, we make a formal application, because we have to survey them, make sure that the acreages are correct, and we want to adjust... acreages are correct, and we want to adjust, take some of that, well, you can see right here, this, a large portion of this red parcel right here, that portion right there was not contemplated as part of the open space parcel prior. Now, since this acreage is not needed for this lot to be the minimum 10-acre size, we now are able to take this portion and add that to the open space trail parcel. It won't be in the final configuration all right here, because as you can see up here, we've, we're adding, there's a very nice flat knoll up, nose up here, that up until this point has not been accessible because it's behind, to the public, because it's behind Oak Springs, and there was no way to get there. But as we are contemplating having a trail that goes not only along this southern property line here, but also along the top property line below Oak Springs, it now lends itself very nicely to a, to an outlook, or a place for a bench, or a picnic area, or rest area for the public, and constitutes effectively a small park. And then it connects up to, will connect up to this, the, what we call the Marinda Trail, which will come all the way down to the Spirit Circle Labyrinth flat site there, and then continue on down all the way to connect up with Marinda.
Marshall, can I interrupt you for a second? So the dark maroon, can you define the colors for us?
Yeah, I was going to go over the legend, and why don't we do that now, so it's easier to see. Understand that the dark maroon represents the portion of the property that we are, will be proposing, be gifted to the town as open space and, an open space parcel and trail parcel. That will be under public ownership and domain to do with, you know, as you wish, but it's anticipated that it's going to be somewhere in excess of six acres and maybe as much as seven, which is, you know, roughly 7%, 8% of the property. Incidentally, the actual building site where actual buildings will be, if this is approved and what we will be proposing, represents only 1.2% of the property. So it's, the open space parcel, open space town portion of the open space parcel will be considerably larger than the actual proposed construction building sites. But in addition to that, this green area, you can see the lot lines, and these will change, but not by lot, the building sites will not change. The green area is, represents, along with the red area, the red areas, what will be designated open space, protected by deed restriction or other mechanism in perpetuity, will not be changed, will stay in its natural state as it is today, except for, save for whatever the town decides to construct as, by way of trails. And then that represents 90, in excess of 95% of the property. The remainder of the property will be, you can see these blue squares here, that, the blue squares represent the building envelope, but not the, not the portion of the building envelope that will actually have a structure. They represent landscape areas, driveways, the kinds of things that go around a home. The little white squares there that you see, those represent what we anticipate will be the actual structure site. And we are, will design the houses, we'll come in with complete design review packages and landscape packages, and when we do that, once we do that, we'll have a better idea of actual sizes of the houses, and we anticipate that those little blue, little white squares will get smaller, and the percentages that we're green-belting will get larger, because, you know, we'll be able to tighten it up once we know exactly what we're going to put there. We need to do course studies on the sites and make sure that the soil's stable and all that prior. One of the things that, that this, the single application allows us is to take some of that property there and kind of morph it, morph it around the property and add it to areas of the open space parcel that we feel would be beneficial. For example, a little bit more separation on the portion of the, down here, on a portion of the open space parcel trail that will actually have the paved access for the houses on it. We wanted to make that a little bit wider, a little bit larger, so that there could be a separation between the trail and the road. Also, the smallest parcel down here, this little parcel here, per year zoning ordinance, there's a requirement for, depending upon slope, for a certain lot size proportional to the size of the home. And we haven't completed our studies yet, but it looks like this parcel will need more acreage to have a home on it, so we're going to include some of that acreage over here, and probably include this entire portion all the way down to Marinda in that parcel, and the proposed driveway, so that it's not an easement, it's their driveway, and in that way give that lot quite a bit more acre, quite a bit more square footage. The, it gets, it gets, oops, let's try that again. See if it comes up. There, it just came up. There we go. Yeah, just, I think it goes to sleep, you know, and, you know, let me see, maybe I'll just go to the other maps. This is the Marin maps picture from, I guess, I guess it's a satellite picture, and it's got our lot lines superimposed upon it. This would be the Ridgway parcel, and this is the main parcel, but they're now going to be all in one application. You can see also on here, we have the home sites. And if you look at the, the, this will give you an idea of the average density around the property and what we're proposing, it's really, you know, we're trying to keep it as insignificant and non-imposing as possible. The access for all but one of the lots will be Marinda, and then you've got, Ridgway would be coming up off of Ridgway over here. We still have quite a few studies to do to verify everything, but we've done some studies already, and we think that it's pretty viable. The, now, this would, it appear would be that flat area I spoke of, the nice little park area. We've got, we've got quite a lot of work to do, if in fact, and we will probably be going forward, assuming we don't hear anything significant here tonight, and if we do, we can make some changes also. And keep in mind also that the information sessions that you've been so good at to host, where the public has input, are not going to end. Once we make an application, as you are all aware, and I think the public may be aware, there'll be public hearings again, and we can make changes again. So it's not written in stone, and we're not, I think you can tell, we're trying to do our best to work with the community. We are, originally, I had committed to, to do nothing to change the historic public use of the property, you know, as going up Marinda, and in fact, I had committed, mentioned that I, it was my intention to monument that and give the public a legal right in perpetuity to that, and I, and we will do that, or we'll propose that. But in fact, as it has turned out with discussions with the neighbors and help from them, and you, and input from the public, we are now going to be proposing increasing that use to almost 300% of what it was, and including, and not only giving a legal right in perpetuity, but including some areas that were not accessible as park-type areas, and trails that were not acceptable, accessible, and some really beautiful areas. And that extra parcel, that extra acreage from the Ridgway parcel just gives us a lot more latitude to make sure that we can move the trail where it won't be too steep, and where it won't be too close to other people's houses and those kinds of things. And so when we get in, when we get into an application, we can, we'll have the room and the extra acreage to play with. But what we're, what we will be proposing, as I said, you know, with some modification of lot lines as needed and input from the public, is in excess of 95% greenbelt, non, won't be changed, left as it is now. Somewhere around six or seven acres will be included in the public open space trail parcel that we intend to gift to the town, or other entity, public entity, as you, the commissioners and the city council feels is appropriate. Only 1.2%, and that will probably get smaller, of the property will actually have a structure on it. We're talking about a very small portion in areas where we can screen the houses, where they, we feel they won't be visible and won't be intrusive. And, you know, we feel, the partners and I feel that that's a, that's a good trade-off and a good, a good preservation of the public's rights and the public's use. We need to, as you all hear, there are the nuts and bolts of things like this. We need to be able to pay for our infrastructure and the cost of land, but, and that's only going to take 1.2% to do. The rest of it will be open space in perpetuity, greenbelt. I probably missed a few things, but I think what I will do is relinquish the floor and stand for questions if you have any. I'm sure there are some.
Yeah, do any of the commissioners have questions for Mr. Rothman?
I have a quick one, I think. Sir, could you just show me once again where the Miranda Road begins that will be the access to all the road...
Would you like to see it on this map or the other one?
Uh, this one.
Okay. It would be here's St. Rita Church, which is where Marinda starts.
Okay.
And it comes, and it comes all the way around up and then ends up right about here at the trailhead, and that's where our road will start, right there, and then it goes up where the blue line is, to the houses.
Okay. Thank you. And then my, my other question is, I understand what you said, that each parcel will be limited to the area that can be developed, and the rest would have to remain open space, but would there be some, some responsibility on the part of the owner of that parcel to care for the open space, to maintain it?
Well, it'd be very limited as to what they can do, but certainly the planning commission can suggest and/or impose conditions of that type during the application process, and I'm not, I'm not against some kind of agreement to that extent.
My concern would be a homeless encampment, or a wild drinking party site, or, you know, debris, that type of thing.
Yes, and that, in those cases, the property owner is always responsible for the cleanup and for policing of it. But I, by way of Scotch broom and things like that, you know, there is, there are requirements that you keep your property free of fuel load, non-native species, invasive things like that. Those things all are already required by various agencies, not least of which being fire, of any landlord, any property owner.
And just a question about, you originally came with us and talked all about the green nature of the building that you're going to do. I assume you're still on that track?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and water catchment systems, you know MMWD has this rule now.
Right. We, the systems that we have in mind will more than comply with what, in fact, will more comply with green building, with GreenPoints requirements. And as I said before, and I will reiterate, I've been building for many, many years, and this is a, I've not, never understood why people didn't do this. It doesn't, it makes perfect sense, and it's not difficult to do when you build a house new. It adds a little bit of expense, but you save that on back end, and not only that, it's sustainable. We can't continue to be wasting resources. It's my intention to showcase some of my own designs that I have proven and have due to work, and especially in my own home, which I would like to build up there. And not only, not only water conservation, but there's, we intend to have solar cells, solar systems installed in every house. We intend to utilize all of the latest in low-flow plumbing fixtures and energy conservation lighting and all of those things. There's, there's a number of different ways that you can reduce a house's footprint and carbon footprint, and not just in your utilities, also in the medium that you use to build. You can add fly ash to concrete. You can use sustainable lumber products. You can use manufactured lumber products, that, things like that, that don't have formaldehyde that off-gas, you have healthy indoor air. All of those things are going to be part of our construction.
Thank you.
Would the deed have restrictions on the fencing by the owner around, are we talking about, will the owner have the right to fence in that area? We're talking about open?
No.
Space, so they would...
In a word, no. It's, when you put, when you crafted either a conservation easement or a deed restriction, you know, you can, you write what you, within limits, I mean, within, it has to be legal, but you can, you can restrict things. And one of the things that is immediately restricted is any kind of changes or structures or construction on that property. You won't be able to landscape it, you won't be able to put fences up. And if they do, there's standard procedures that are enforcement procedures that every town and county in California has at their disposal, and they do use, and they have been using for many years, and they can cause it to be removed if the landowner doesn't remove it, and then go after the landowner for the cost of it.
Okay. A second question, and maybe you already mentioned this, but the square footage of the little white squares right now are at what?
Well, you know, we had to kind of pick a number, and also, you know, the maps change a lot, and in order to keep the cost down, I've done, you know, some of the maps myself, I confess. And what I was trying to get was about 4,000 square feet, which is larger than we're going to be proposing, mainly because that was the smallest number that I could figure out how to get, draw on these maps. But that's, that's larger than, they're larger than we're going to end up with, I think.
I know with last meeting, some of the rest, some of the public raised some questions about geologic issues, so I don't know if you had a chance to do any, any, any more information on that.
We have to, in a preliminary way. I haven't, I haven't wanted to get any of our soils guys out there with, my soils guys out there with equipment to do studies, underground studies and course studies, because it's been so wet, and we don't want to create a mud puddle out there, or erosion. But, you know, I've walked a property a number of times, both with the neighbors and on my own, and I've seen, and also with my soils engineers, and we've seen, especially in the areas where they've had problems, because they did fix some of them up above us, and there were problems down below us, and we've seen no, and it's rewarding, I haven't, I haven't had, there may be someone here who will tell me something's happened, but I haven't had any phone calls or anything, but I, we've seen no sloughing and no excessive signs of landslides or anything like that, and it's been quite, you know, the land is quite saturated right now, so I can't guarantee that there won't be erosion, but right now it looks pretty stable.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Hi, Marshall.
Hi, Mimi. How are you?
Good. If you could go back to the other map for a second? I was hoping for some clarity about the, the part that you were talking about gifting as open space or a trail parcel, and that appears to be in red.
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed that, for want of a better word, so, you know, right now, it looks like there's a loop that would come down and go along the edge of the property...
Yeah.
...and not quite go down all the way to the top of Miranda.
Correct.
Would that be a trail that you're talking about, or is, yeah?
Yeah, the neighborhood, some representative of the neighborhood group and I also walked that to make sure that there was a viable trail, and it's beautiful. And it goes, and what, the reason it doesn't go all the way to the top of Marinda is because there is an easement here that gives good access, and we didn't feel the need to have it run along the road there, and also that allows us to put more, more square footage onto the other parts of the trail. And it is, what we'll be proposing is a trail that goes all the way up and around, with a few areas that are going to be larger than this. We'll take some of this and move them around so that we don't, it isn't too steep. Goes all the way up here, attaches to this trail here that's existing and goes up on, I guess it's open space, isn't it? Is that part of the open space district or watershed? And then it will continue on, oops, along the property line at the top of the property where this is Oak Springs up here, and we will be proposing that this, this nice flat open area here that has a nice view of San Francisco be included as well as, you know, for a park bench or a rest area, and it will continue up to and attach to the top of the Marinda Trail, which goes in this area, and includes a large parcel right here, a large flat area here that has historically been used for everything from yoga to stargazing and everything else. And that will continue on all the way down to Marinda. And the access road will be an easement for the homes only on that portion of the, portion of the trail parcel that is needed. It will, it will end right here at the last building site here, and it will get progressively narrower as possible by ordinance and zoning, per the number of houses that it services. At some point, it becomes a driveway, like this one here is just a driveway. And that road will be the responsibility of the property owners for maintenance, construction, and insurance and all those things. As I said, it'll be an easement, but it will be their responsibility, it won't cost the town anything. And we do intend to, and it's a complicated, you can see how complicated it is, to take some acreage here and move it all forward and change the property lines so everyone has their 10 acres, but we'll get it over there, and we'll put some of that acreage, more of that acreage... more of that acreage alongside where the pavement is, so that there can be some separation and a public trail that's not on the road. They can still walk on the road because it's a public ownership parcel, but if they don't want to walk on the road, there will be a trail next to it that, and we're going to try to have enough separation with this extra acreage so that they don't have to have the experience of walking on a road.
So it's, the trail would be adjacent to the road at that point, or the trail would be the road at that point?
Well, as I said, the people can, riders or whoever wants to can ride on the road, but there will be a trail adjacent to it. And, you know, topography allowing, we're going to try to make it separated enough by not only elevation, but also by distance, so that the people who are walking on that trail, and then, you know, we're talking about nine houses here, many of which come off early. So there's not going to be that much traffic on this road, you know, three or four houses at most at the top there driving. So, but it's still, you know, there are people who you don't want to walk on asphalt, and so there will be a trail, enough separation that you'll have a trail next to it.
And then on the 14-acre parcel, where I see you're talking about, you know, a road coming in along the existing path around Ridgeway at the top there? And it looks like you've got the road going back again along the edge of the property where the eucalyptus trees are on that?
I'm not, well, let me point out where the eucalyptus trees, the eucalyptus trees kind of start right about here and run along the property line all the way up here. This is a little bit below the eucalyptus trees or below where they start. And you know the parcel up there that has, they put the gazebo and the fence? That, the corner of that property is right here. And the gazebo and the fence, the fence runs this property line, and the gazebo is right about here. And right next to that, there is an existing little trail, road, I mean, I guess it used to be a road. It looks like it was, at one time was graded all the way down to, came around, graded all the way down to the neighborhood there. And there's still cuts there, but we don't anticipate, we don't plan on using that. But it's a very flat saddle here. There's no grade at all, and it goes to a very nice flat area that gives us enough room to move the house back far enough that it won't be visible. And, you know, I should mention that again also. With very few exceptions, maybe one house or two houses down at the bottom here, we do not anticipate having to use landscaping to hide these houses. We will have landscape plans, but I think we can design these houses so that they won't be visible from anywhere in Fairfax within town limits. You may be able to see a glimpse of a corner of a house as you're walking up the road somewhere when you're right next to it, but, you know, landscaping will grow up eventually and block that as well. The idea is to have the houses not be there for anybody walking by.
And the other thing, you are familiar with the part of our general plan that talks about the visual resources and, you know, this whole ridgeline. So it's not just people walking along, but also people from the downtown center part of the town.
We did extensive story polls and driving across the way and getting up on Mount Tam and looking and moving things before we chose these particular sites. And the reason that we did that was because we wanted to make sure that we could have sites where we could put a house, where we felt we comfortable that we could design a house and build it such that it would not be visible. And I think we've accomplished that. You know, and keep in mind, we're talking about single-story houses for the most part. Maybe one or two will have a mezzanine kind of stepped back of necessity. But when you have a single-story house and a fairly large, flat area where you can put it back, and, you know, this elevation is quite a bit above town, it become, very quickly becomes possible to design houses that are not visible from anywhere within town. You may be able to see one or two of them from the top of Mount Tam, but it's going to be a long ways away.
If I could add, assuming this goes forward, part of the parallel process will be the SEQA review. And in addition to what the application should include with photo montage of visibility from different parts of town, the environmental assessment will have to analyze that thoroughly. So you would get a complete set of photos, putting the structure on the site and then viewing it from different parts of town.
And what'll be even better, because we'll be coming in with a complete design review package on each house, it's helpful to the people doing the EIR because they know exactly what it's going to be there, but it's also helpful to you because we can do a photo montage that is exactly what's going to be there, not just an envelope that, you know, it's kind of a vague idea of what a house will look like there. These will be designed houses with landscape plans that will be built, that will run parallel in design review packages, and I understand you also, you also review the design review, so you're probably familiar with that. And we'll have photo montages, we'll have all of that, so, and not only that, story polls will be put up. So you'll, you know, we're not, we want to know, and we feel comfortable that we've done our research, but if there's something that's going to be visible, we want to know it so we can mitigate that.
And, oh, I'm sorry. I have one more question for the planning director, actually, and kind of shows my own ignorance here, but as part of this plan, if it's brought forward, would the planning commission be approving the designations of each particular at least 10-acre parcel for each building? How would that work, or is that, because I understand there've been?
So part of the process would be the entitlements application, which would include design review, and each, as Mr. Rothman mentioned, he was going to come in with one application for the whole thing. And parallel to the design review would be the tentative parcel maps and doing the land division process. So that's very onerous exercise because we have our own parcel map ordinance of the town, and then there's also the California Land Map Act, which stipulates what you have to do to create legal parcels. So there'll be the entitlements, which includes design review, there'll be the parcelling of the property, and then parallel to that, as you know, is the SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act review, which in this case, in all likelihood, would require not just a checklist review, but a full-blown EIR. And I believe Mr. Rothman's well aware of that.
In fact, I have a question for you. It's not, we're not, it's not our intention to even attempt. I don't think it's appropriate to do a negative declaration on this. I don't think it's going to be approved, and I don't think that answers your questions. So rather than go through that whole exercise, we would probably be requesting that we go right to an EIR without, rather than, you know, have, put them through the exercise of going through findings and a designation and all that, we would just request it.
Right. And the first step is a checklist, which has 19 categories, and then that shows you what you have to zero in on with the EIR specifically, too.
Yeah, and, you know, that would be up to the, you, the planning director and the planning staff to generate the areas of concern that they wanted to see. And as you are aware, and maybe the public isn't, but I'll enlighten them, the environmental impact report process is an independent third party, and as such, while I get to pay for it, I don't hire them. They don't work for me. And so, you know, planning staff and you, the commissioners, and we'll be designating what you want them to look at, what you think are their concerns, and that's what they'll look at. And it'll be helpful, I think, to them to have the houses designed, because we'll have material boards for them and things like that, so they can actually do studies.
And can I just add for this, I know I mentioned this before in prior meeting, but for the benefit of the public here and also watching, the California Environmental Quality Act, which is abbreviated SEQA, was passed in the mid-'70s to inform the public and the policymakers of environmental impacts from a pending project. It's a parallel process. It's not the actual entitlements process. It's parallel to inform the public and inform the policymakers of the impacts of a project. And there's a whole slew of categories that you have to analyze, that went from '17 to '19 just recently. It's a very thorough process, but it's made to make everything that's potentially an impact visible and dealt with. And it either has to be mitigated, or you have to come up with what's called a statement of overriding consideration. It's a very onerous process. It's actually where most legal challenges take place, where objecting parties find flaws in an EIR and they challenge it in court, and then they either prevail or not with a judge. But that's where the rubber meets the road, usually with litigation on these things.
Very well put. I've been through them myself, and they are pretty good.
If I could just have one follow-up question for Jim, one follow-up. The, I understand that the planning commission would be looking at the entitlements application and the design review. Does the planning commission also have a role in the tentative parcel map analysis? Or is that just your?
Yes, no, 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 no. And then, yes.
Okay, I have, we were, Mimi brought up trails, and so, and you mentioned that you're putting a park bench at that first triangular area up there. So I'm just going to pass this thought by you, because you're being really cooperative and coming back again and again, is, on those trails, would it be possible to put in sort of training sections? You know, Mill Valley, there's a public park, and as you walk through it, there's like a climbing bar, and maybe there's some swings, and maybe there's some other stuff you can kind of exercise on, just?
Well, to clarify, to clarify, we are not able to do any improvements on that parcel. You own it. So you would be putting in whatever you wanted. Now, I would not be against having some fund set aside to help fund some of those things, but that can't, that will be installed by the town or whatever entity owns that parcel at that time, and there's certainly enough room for a park horse or anything that you want to have up there. And we're talking seven acres or six or seven acres.
Okay, so if we came up with the idea, then, if that's how it has to be, you would cooperate with that idea?
Of course, yes.
Thank you.
And by the way, it benefits, it benefits our home sites. I mean, I would like to ride my bike on that trail. I'd like to have a park horse up there. I'd like to sit up there and look at the stars some night. And so, it's not, you know, it's a win-win, I think. I mean, I'm not against having those things there.
Okay, anyone else?
So first of all, thank you for your presentation and for these improved maps. They're very, they're very clear. So just to make sure that I understand more or less correctly regarding this, the road, the main road up here, that would be a road that would be accessible to the public, just like any other road, but it would be owned collectively by the owners of those houses, ultimately, like through a homeowners association or something? Is that what I'm?
Well, it would be more of a road, it's more of a road maintenance agreement, and it's regulated by the Department of Real Estate, and you have to go through public, what's called a white paper and a pink paper. But it would not be accessible to the public for motor vehicles. It would be accessible to the public for anything but a motor vehicle, but it would not, the idea being that we don't, we don't want the property owners to have to deal with people parking the driveway and stuff like that. It's, there's only a very small number of houses up there, and it also, you know, too many cars up there would put a burden on what's there, and we don't really want to burden it any more than we're burdening it already. But there would be bicycles and skateboards or whatever people wanted to put up there that weren't motorized.
I think I understand. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we can open the public.
And can I just, I have to confess, Linda's gone and our minister's clerk's not here, and I'm not really good with that timer. I'm wondering if one of you could sort of be the timekeeper, even if it's sort of ballpark? And then, Madam Chair, you might want to just take a show of hands to see how many folks intend to talk, and then make a decision whether you want to do two minutes or three minutes. And then lastly, I got a heads up from somebody, I believe in the Ridgway neighborhood, that has a flash drive maybe that they want to present something with, and I would recommend that you sort of, maybe we save that for the last, so that we can fumble with the technical parts of that and not keep everybody from talking. Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like we may have at least six or seven members, so the public would like to speak. Eight, anyone, could you raise your hand if you would be interested in speaking to, I don't know, Jim, what do you think, two should be? Okay. All righty then. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Susan Barron, and I'm somewhat of a representative of the Oak Manor neighborhood, and I've been talking with dozens upon dozens of people, and I wanted to come tonight because many people cannot come during a weeknight, and many kids, people have kids or whatever other obligations, and represent their concerns. So I'm mainly speaking for more than myself right now. What was, what has been expressed is that, of course, they want to respect Marshall Rothman's role as a property owner, and everybody is glad that he's making strides to be ecologically-minded. However, there's still a lot of concerns in various realms. And these are the impact upon traffic, the geological disruption to the area, and I know that he has said that he believes and has ascertained it to be stable, but I've talked to people who have lived in the area their entire lives and have seen a great deal of motion and are very emphatic about that. And, let's see, the impact upon the situation in case of a fire, or in creating, how the ecology would be affected in terms of the fire conditions. And finally, a subject that's very near and dear to my heart as well, which is the environment and the fact that this is going to be creating a habitat fragmentation by spreading out, and rather, instead of remaining consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods, by creating large properties and asphalt that it's spreading to and just cutting through the heart of land that articulates with open space. So we are glad, I am glad, and I know other people will be glad to hear that environmental report will be done, environmental impact assessment. So we really wanted to stress that, that they really, really look at that and continue to work with that in mind, because that's very, very important to us in Fairfax.
Nicole Calderero, 1-65, 1-65 Fristock Avenue in Fairfax. And I'd like to just recognize the fact that, you know, this property was bought after Dr. Wall owned it for speculation, and that in America, nobody's guaranteed a profit, that all of the homeowners in Fairfax, their homes are their investments, and as a result, loss of value and risk is a very important problem that we all have to deal with. We know that increased density decreases value, so this is going to impact all of us. We also know that recent studies of Sir Francis Drake have shown that we're above capacity. So adding more houses here is going to be a problem. Secondly, we're seeing a decrease in funding for, and the runs for Golden Gate Transit, so, and there's no plans of increasing that in the future. So things are just going to get worse for present people here, and any more that we add are just going to make it worse. I didn't see an economic analysis in this property for the housing costs, but it looks like they're probably going to range above $2 to $3 million. I don't see that at median, and right now, our needs in terms of servicing houses of this size and cost mean that they're going to have people coming in to be nannies, gardeners, et cetera, so it's going to increase congestion. Our housing needs are really for people who are earning less than $50,000 a year per annum. I don't see this addressing that need. I think that if we're going to have development in this property, it should be for people who are working at minimum wage or just above. And again, you know, obviously, this property is bought for speculation. Nobody deserves a profit in America. Everything has risks, and so I feel sorry for the property owners, but really...
Excuse me, sir, if you could wrap up your comments.
Do I get as much time as she had?
You're right at two minutes.
Okay. So basically, what we need is a windfall property value tax, because every time a municipality changes zoning and gives allowance for development, the property value goes up. What we should do is tax that increased value, they do in England and many other places in the United States. That would give us money for development of workforce housing.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Green. I live on Ridgway in the last block right before some of this might start. And I will say that most people walk up, they walk up that street, and that area that he's giving as open space is mostly very unbuildable because it's a very steep drop there. You can't even walk on there. I don't know how much of it we're going to be able to walk on to get up, let's say, from the under Ridgway to Oak Springs, how much before the part that he's calling open space will be walkable. space will be walkable. I'm also concerned about the traffic and things in, in a fire because we have these tiny little roads up there, even worse than Miranda's, and a lot of people coming down, down the hill in an, in an emergency. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about how we're actually gonna be able to walk there in these paths he's talking about creating, which some of it might be on this part that's really so steep that I don't know how you can make a path on it. So tho, those are some of my concerns. Another concern I have is I heard, and I don't know, but I heard that there was some rezoning done so that an attached unit could be put on each of these 10 houses. That's not true? Okay. So that was just another concern because-
Excuse me, if you could start to wrap up your comments.
Okay, so that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
John Romatis, 49 Madrone Road. Actually, just had a couple of questions about the road there for the gentleman. I forgot your name.
So, Madam Chair, I would suggest we take all the comments and then let the applicant respond to any questions that are still outstanding.
Yes, we'll do, we're gonna, so anyway, you could ask your questions and then we're gonna allow Mr. Rothman to come back afterwards to answer the questions that have been raised by the public.
So the road is ostensibly a private road, that's what I'm taking, and I was wondering about, is it a public right-of-way? The road, per se, and there's maybe sewer line or utilities and who's paying for that? Also, you know, it looks kind of like a trailhead up there, you know, you kind of, or maybe down below. It's, you know, it would be nice to drive up there, if possible, if it's a public right-of-way, park and then go on a hike, what have you. I'm not familiar with the area, but just looking at the map, you know, it's a, it's a private road, it looks like, and it's very, gonna be very nice houses and there'll be people, you know, accessibility, you know, maybe somebody's, you know, just more accessibility, I think, to getting on that road would, might be nice if it's a public right-of-way. I mean, I'm, that's kind of unclear on that, so, thanks.
Jane Richardson-Mc, 49 Madrone Road. Why I'm a little confused also about the road, this private road, if it's private and the public is not allowed to drive on it, is it going to have a gate on it or how does the public, how is the public kept out from driving or just a sign saying you, you're not allowed to drive here or private road, something like that? The other part I really, I cannot understand is if somebody's going to, and if these are going to be, you know, multimillion dollar houses, and yet they only get to be on the little blue part and the little white part is their house and they have this vast expanse that's their property, that they're somewhat responsible for maintaining, I don't see how that's ever gonna fly. Or are there rules in place, would there be rules firmly in place that could not be changed or broken, saying, "Well, no, we, that's our land, we want to have a guest house or we want to picnic there and we don't, we want to do things there." That's breaking my heart because that is all natural property right now. Wildlife has, it's, it belongs to them, not to people. When the houses go up, there'll be lighting, it's gonna change the wildlife corridors completely, the bird paths, lights, butterflies, I don't know what all, anything that's natural is going to be displaced once again by human beings. And I, I have a real problem with humans taking over the earth and saying, "Nature and everything else, get behind me, we're more important, we can do what we want, we need, we need, we have, we need." And I say, greed is the enemy of life, so let's give nature back to nature. I know it's not possible, but if somebody won the lottery, maybe they could pay them and they could make their profit. Thank you.
My name is Henry Frannberger and I really don't have comments. I have a couple of questions that I'd like for Mr. Rothman to address. I live at the end of San Gabriel Drive and my property abuts the property we're talking about. And so I'm concerned mostly from my perspective about the trail. And I want to know if the trail is going to be graded or if it's going to be fenced. And also, in, at the back of my house are two very large winter streams that are about, the cavity for the stream is about eight to 10 feet deep. And I want to know, I mean, people are not gonna be able to hop down in it and crawl back out, so I want to know if they're planning on building bridges across those, across those types of swales and seasonal streams. So I'd like for him to address that. Thank you very much.
I'm Barbara Cedarblade. I live next door to Henry at the end of San Gabriel Drive and I have a couple of questions also. I'm a little confused, I hate to betray my ignorance of all this process, but I didn't quite understand who is actually paying to build all these trails and then who will be responsible for maintaining them. Is that all on the town or does Mr. Rothman and his group, do they build all the trails and then turn it over to the town? And like Henry, I'd have concerns about the geological ramifications of any of that because we've had a couple mudslides in our backyard and apparently this is Franciscan Melange and so huge areas, if they get destabilized, can just break away. Anyway, the second question is, the open space that apparently goes with each home, if anything happens on that open space, then he's saying the property owner is responsible and I guess I want some clarification about how that works. And then, in, in, of course, self-interestedly, if there is a mudslide off of some of that now-owned private property, is the homeowner whose little home down here goes with that big fanned-out part up above, are they responsible or are they not responsible because they didn't do anything physically to the property, so it's an act of God? I, I don't know. I'm confused about the whole issue of responsibility. I think one of my other neighbors mentioned that, responsibility for what happens on that big fanned-out area that goes with the little home down here. And I'm glad there's gonna be an environmental impact report. Thank you.
My name's Tim Eckey. I live at 16 Vista Way, which, like Henry, abuts the properties above us. I have three things I'd like Mr. Rothman to talk about and maybe, and the first one would be, maybe Mr. Moore to talk about, is that when, when he, when this was rezoned many years ago from one house per seven acres to one house per 10 acres, there was this huge dark line around this thing and it was supposedly the ridgeland protection area that nothing was gonna build, be built inside. Are all these homes, are they outside of that ridgeline or has that been obliterated?
So would you like me to respond to this one?
Yes, please, true.
So I can't speak definitively because I don't have those maps in front of me and it predates my time here, but we have the maps in the office and you're talking about the protected ridgways?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a Ridgway map, or there's a, you know, a map that still exists that we still refer to.
I just haven't, I haven't seen it in any of these things, so I just want to-
Sure, and we will be getting into the woods and all that as soon as forward.
Right, right. But the two points beyond that are, one is utilities going up there. I'm assuming they're all gonna be underground as far as electrical and gas, obviously, but is, the one thing that, that he may run into a problem with is, and I haven't heard anybody address this yet, is water. In that area where Vista is, I worked for the fire department, I know that was a low-water pressure area for a long, a long time, and I don't think they've done anything with it because as he crawls up that hill, you're gonna get to the point where you're not gonna be able to run a main anymore. Is, in this plan, a tank gonna be installed? And if it is, I, I'm sure he's looked into this and, and you, you, you're gonna be fed from the bottom unless somehow they can hook into the tanks at the top and bring it down. And I don't think that's gonna happen, but is, is there gonna be a water tank involved in this project, which it looks like there's some gonna, there's gonna have to be some supply up higher than that high house or probably the last four houses, maybe. So that's one of my questions.
If you could wrap up your comments.
I'm good, I have one more thing and it's just to echo what the people have been saying about the, about the trails and, and these trails are running through some deep canyons in there, if there are gonna be bridges or if they're gonna be up far enough away from the houses and tucked away. Hopefully, that will be worked into the design of the trails to have them run in a natural area that doesn't go through people's backyards. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you might have the, the slides. Okay. 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 There's a question. Can I have a question? Two, three, four. Hi, my name's Vilvi Appleton and I live at, yeah, if you don't mind, 125 Ridgway. And I want to talk about, a little bit about the road, the Ridgway Road, which is this here. And I brought some slides to show you guys. We sort of went through this a couple of years ago with the 130 Ridgway development and what was determined there was where the paved road ends at the top of Ridgway, the dirt road kind of comes around and it's extremely difficult to, to make that into a road that's wide enough for fire codes. And I brought some slides to show you guys what's going on up there and I would love Mr. Rothman to actually address this tonight. We brought it up a couple of times and he's been a little bit telling us how easy it is, but we know that it's not that easy and I'm very curious about what his plan actually is for that. While we're loading up these, a couple of pictures I took, I'll ask a few other questions. My understanding is that this is a 99-acre parcel that is zoned for 10-acre units, so I don't know why we're talking about 10 houses. It seems like it should be a maximum of nine houses. 10 acres each goes into nine, goes into 90, not into 100.
Madam Chair, if you might, if I could go ahead and address that right now?
Yes, please.
There's actually one parcel that's not zoned 10-acre minimum lot. It's zone RS 7.5. It's, that means a minimum acre, minimum size lot of 7,500 square feet. Having said that, it's in the hill area, so depending on the slope, you have to add acreage to it. And our quick and dirty calculations at this point are that that one little lot that's further down that he mentioned, the first one as you extend the road, that will have to grow from what is now about 7,500 square feet to almost an acre and that will sort of shift the lines all the way around somewhat, but that's where the 10th house comes from.
So it's really nine houses?
It's 10 houses, but one of the lots is a different zoning.
I see. Okay. The other thing I wanted to also reiterate is what someone else mentioned is that I'm very curious about how these nine houses, or 10 actually, relate to the ridgeline ordinance. It seems to me like those, the flat pads that we've talked about that are on the northwest end of the property, they're very convenient to build on because they're flat and they're, they're lovely spots. It seems to me that those are probably in violation of the ridgeline ordinance. I'd like to see elevations and just see how those houses relate to the ridgeline, but that would be the ridgeline headed up the hill and those pads, I, you know, we've all been there, they're on the ridgeline. So I'm very curious how, how that works.
Excuse me, sir, you have about a half a minute left.
Okay.
If you wanted to say something, excuse me, if you wanted to make comments about the slides that you have to show us, this would be the time to do so.
Great, I'll do that right now. So this is the top of Ridgway where it turns into a dirt road. It's about 10 feet across here. If you go to the next slide, we get to the fenced-off part. This, this is a driveway to the right that goes down to a private property. This is the road that's fenced off right now, fire road. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that this is Ridgway, this is, this is the Ridgway Avenue. It's about six feet across. And what happens is, on the left side, that's a very steep incline that's on private property, that's called the 130 Ridgway. And what happens there is, as we learned in the 130 Ridgway project a couple of years ago, in order to make that road wide enough for fire trucks, we'd need a, what's usually a 12, at the minimum, a 12-foot-high retaining wall that goes 600 feet. And the, the planning commission at that point killed the project because the road, the retaining wall was just so outrageous for that neighborhood. It's a tiny little neighborhood. So if you go to the next slide, I just wanted to show for scale, here's my daughter on that road. It's a tiny little road. And if you go to the next slide, this picture is from, is, is on the ridge where I think this house is proposed to be and there's no road up there. It's, it's, it's a pathway. So this is where a paved road is being proposed and I just want you guys, if, if anyone wants to come up there, I'd be happy to walk the property with you and show you how it relates to. The last thing I want to mention very quickly is, I think not only there are legal issues, but there's cultural issues here of building very large houses in our middle-class town. I know in my neighborhood, the average house size is 1500, 1400 square feet is the average house in the Willow neighborhood and to have 3,500 or 4,000 square-foot houses up above looking down, it just seems like it's, it's, it's a class issue almost of, of who are these houses for? And, you know, we're a little middle-class town and I would just, I'm looking to the planning commission to not only uphold our laws, but also protect our culture here. Thank you.
Sir, by, by the way, I did give you an extra minute to go through the slides for the benefit of the public.
And I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
And great, Bruce, thank, if you can take us back to that. Thank you. Thanks, Bruce.
Michael McIntosh. I'm very encouraged to see the engagement of the community. Mr. Rothman certainly has an entitlement to his land, whatever he may want to do if it falls within the scope of a pre-existing zoning when he purchased it and it'd be very expensive for the town to try to thwart him from that. But that said, and I realize this is a very important asset to the town, I would like the town to remember that in 2006, I offered this property for free to the town of Fairfax. I put in contract with Dr. Wall and I offered it Fairfax and I said, "If you'd like it, you may have it. All you have to do is just come up with a plan, didn't need any money, of how we could work together on my property." So I don't find it really completely genuine of all the parties involved with the town to not embrace something that has very low impact if the property was offered to you for free and you chose to take pass on it. And so really, I'd like you to just think of that perspective from somebody that's coming up with a very reasonable approach that is not a high impact. And again, I'm not trying to weigh in on the property at all, it does not serve me well, but I would like to remind us all that I did offer this property for free as a town asset and the town chose that they did not want it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make any comments before we let Mr. Rothman respond?
Short, Lynn Yetter, 224 Merind Drive. So I have a question about street lamps. Does he have to have them? I hope not. Street lamps? I would hope that there are not street lamps up there. I don't know if he has to have them. The other thing is, wear and tear on the road up to 224, up to the dead end, you know, who may, who's gonna maintain that with all the trucks? Construction could take quite a while, I don't know. The other thing is, I would prefer, as I look, I've been there for 38 years and my husband's been on, was on San Gabriel 60 years, for 60 years. So I, I've had to deal, I'm married to drive, with everybody really trespassing to get up on that, that land. So I've dealt with the parties and the fires and the homeless and everybody else. So I would prefer, I mean, this man has bought the property, you know, he's gonna build houses, like it or not, something's gonna be up there. But I would, I don't like the idea of build it, they will come, to all this open space with exercise equipment, because I personally don't want more people going up and down my street. That's how I feel about it. If people want to come, they can hike in the way they have now when they trespass, they don't all park on the hill. So as ugly as it is having houses up there, I kind of like the idea of a road with fire hydrants in case there is a fire, that it can be put out. I've seen, I mean, I've lived there, I've seen a few fires. Liability on this- Liability on this property, the town's going to assume. If you're on one of these exercise things and you break your leg, who's liable? I don't know. I wonder about that. Like to change the name of the path from Miranda Trail to something else, because again, I don't want to draw attention to it. My personal opinion, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Hi. Hey, can I use your pointer? Yeah, I purchased my property at the end of Archangel in 98, and when I purchased that, I was told that the, all the property behind it, which is the wall property, was unstable and never could be built upon, and that was decided back in the 50s or something. And so it's interesting that it's sufficiently stable now, but wasn't then. The other thing is, is on this area right here, I'm thinking that this is the area right behind where the slides were for people on San Gabriel, I think, is it?
So.
Yeah, so if that's the case, then it's, if this property gets given to the town, then the town's going to take responsibility for any slides that happen. So I'm sure you guys will take that into consideration. And then lastly, Mr. Rothman, this one is right behind my house, so not in my backyard. Last time you were talking about considering moving this one over to here, I just want to say I'm still interested in you doing that.
Okay, does anyone else want to speak? Otherwise, we're going to close the public hearing and turn it back over to Mr. Rothman to answer your questions.
Okay. I'll try to answer those the best I can, make some notes. I'll try to go to the last ones first because they're fresh in my memory. We have this site here that you talked about, and there's another site over here. I prefer this, the site that you prefer as well, just from a standpoint of it being easier to hide the house and it's farther up, and we still have to, once we get in there with, with soils, engineers, and the core, to make sure that it's stable, that's when we make the decision. The concern about Ridgway here, the trail going up, there is an existing trail here. It's not on our property, it's right next to our property. It's, I think it's on the map as Ridgway Avenue, but it's existing, and it's not hard to walk, it's not too steep. It is on the ridge, it's very steep on both sides, but it does exist, and there is access there. This parcel here, this large parcel here, will not be that large, because as I said before, we're going to take some of it to put up here, some of it to make this trail larger. We're going to change the configuration of this trail, part of the trail here, so that we can avoid being too close to people's houses, and to make sure that we can cross those swales and those streams in places where it makes sense, rather than places where we had to. That gives us a latitude to do that, and of course, there will be the need for some bridges there, because you can't cross them otherwise and not create, I'm not interested in doing any construction there, and anytime you do construction, you take the chance of exacerbating the problem. We've looked at it. We're also talking about walking trails. You know, they're all over Mount Tam, they're dirt walking trails. This is not a road construction, these are walking trails. It doesn't require much to forge those. To address the road size on Ridgway, this access here, I understand the concerns, and I have looked at the historical hearings, the statements that were made during that and the costs. I've put in hundreds of miles of roads all over California. I think I know what I'm looking at. The picture that we saw of the slope, the very steep slope, that is a legal slope without a retaining wall, two to one. And if there is a need for a retaining wall, it won't be that large. There are different, also, there are different requirements and ordinances for a road that services more than one house as opposed to a road that services one house. That's a driveway, it doesn't need to be that wide. The fire department is, by the way, is very interested in having us put a nice round turnaround here with a fire hydrant for them. And I'm not, you know, I personally think that's needed, because we have homeless issues up there. To move on to the homeless issue, which was raised, that's an ongoing problem for everybody. It's an ongoing problem for any property. My experience has been that people who own a property and live on that property tend to keep it to much more, to a smaller impact than if it's an absentee owner. I think that having a formalized entrance and for trails and gates and things will also tend to make it less attractive to people who are trying to camp there, because you've got actual public walking by. But, you know, given the problems that we have in our society with homeless, there's going to be some of that, and there are laws in place to change that, to deal with that when it comes up. As far as fire goes, which is a concern of mine, and has been a concern of mine since I bought the property, because you have people up there with cookstoves and camping sometimes, it's not going to be, we can only make the situation better by having a water main up there with fire hydrants. And if we do, if it does turn out, and by the way, a lot of these things, all of these things are going to be studied. We'll know before it gets anywhere near an approval whether or not it's viable, and you will have an opportunity to speak again on that. Nothing's going to be approved if it doesn't work. I've already been in contact with MMWD. There is a large tank up here, and they have water access for a water main up here. They're doing a study as we speak. I was hoping that they would have it done by now, but they haven't. Got in touch with me and told me it was done. As to whether that water main should come down this direction or from up, from below, the situation is that, you know, your pressure is only as good as the elevation of the tank that it comes from. So whether it comes down around here and up here, or whether it comes from here, if they're both coming from the same tank, your pressure is going to be the same with some differences for resistance of flow, but it's, you know, you're not going to increase the pressure unless you're coming from a different source up here, except that you have a more direct route and you get head, what's called head, which is the height of the water and the weight of the water. If it's necessary to put a tank in there on one or two of the houses, or even three or four of the houses above, which we have looked at and are concerned about, which is why I've asked MMWD to do a study, then we'll, there are plenty of sites where we can bury a tank, so it's not visible. And that would be probably, preferably included within one of these blue areas, maybe one for each house, maybe a couple of them. There's ample space on those blue areas, those would be areas that that kind of thing would be. And I'm not against and have done water tanks for houses in this kind of a situation. The fire department likes them because you have a ready source of water on-site that they can tap into, because when you have a conflagration and a large fire going, it's not uncommon for, when they're fighting a lot of different fronts, for the fire hydrants' pressure to go down. And so it's always nice if they have a swimming pool they can put a pump into or a tank that has a valve where they can actually tap into it. Now, I see you shaking your head. This is what I'm told, and I don't know how much that makes a difference, but I know that having a road that they can drive on with fire hydrants is going to be a benefit one way or another.
They're going to ask you to put in a single tank that's, that came by the MMWD instead of having individual tanks, that's not going to be what you're going to want. Sir, if you come down the top, that's great, but you're going to get...
Sir, we, no more public comment, please.
I'd like to talk about that afterwards, but that's why I asked MMWD to do the study, and I've also, I also have Ross Valley Fire District looking at it as well.
Marshall, Marshall, I think the chair, you should address the Planning Commission, the comments with the public, the back and forth with the public is...
Okay, I'll do that. And those are the things that will be studied and that we have to look at. And some of them I've already tried to start looking at by asking, you know, the various agencies to look at, but they haven't gotten back to me yet. My experience has been, and I've built water companies. I built a water company in San Luis Obispo with a 68,000-gallon tank and a reverse auspices system. We went through the State Water Quality Resources Board, got it legalized off of two wells with 25 houses in an area where we had, where there were conflagrations with one way in and one way out. We dealt with all of the concerns about getting people out of there if there was a fire. We even built a heliport where we had a stub off from the water tank, so helicopters could fill up. I've dealt with these issues before. They can be expensive, but almost without exception, they can be dealt with from an engineering standpoint.
If I can interrupt you, I know that you have dealt with these issues, and that you also know this is an excellent opportunity, and I'm sure you've already considered the idea of rainwater catchment, because it's money from heaven.
In fact, we are going to have a system for gray water recycling and rainwater catchment on every single house. And I've provided Jim in his office, and I can provide anyone who's interested, in a design for that. I've already designed it. And that, those systems work. I mean, they save, they save 80% of the use of water in a house. It makes a huge difference, not to mention the fact that you have a ready, stable source of water should you need to...
Right. Not only that, but the new codes are going in that direction as well by the time you're ready to build.
And should be.
You'll have that requirement.
It's actually there, it started in January. MMWD is requiring...
Absolutely.
So if you could continue, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I'll try to keep going, absolutely, and should be. I mean, I can't believe we've been so wasteful. And as I've said before, it's only in the last 100, 150 years that we've gotten so wasteful. People didn't waste water when they had to carry it up in a bucket, you know? So, you know, we have to get back to that. Yeah, we have to get back to that. Let me see, we have lighting. We will be doing studies, and it will be probably part of the impact report for exterior lighting on the homes. And there are ways of screening that, I've done it before. You make sure that they're not visible, that they don't create an intrusive event. And there's other things that you look at too that weren't mentioned, like reflective windows and things like that. So all of these things have to be looked at and studied, and they will be looked at prior to any approval, and you'll have that in front of you. We have, my eyes aren't worth they used to be, strangers on the trails, you know, these are problems. As far as liability, you know, the liability, who's responsible? The landowner, whether or not, I'm not a lawyer, and I have insurance on my properties. I've had, I've had things happen on my properties, and I refer to my insurance company. They deal with it the way they deal with it. Personally, I think they're a little severe, but that, they take their position, and it gets adjudicated. It's not going to change whether that, those property owners own the property, or I own the property, or somebody else owns it. The laws are the laws, you're responsible for your property to the extent that you're able to enforce it upon the insurance company. And whether or not it's an act of God is an open question, and I don't really know the answer to that. But it won't change what exists now. I may or may not be responsible, depending on my insurance company, or the property owner who buys it from me may or may not be responsible, and that's pretty much the same with all of us. Now, as far as density and that being out of character for the neighborhood, the other speaker spoke about houses being 1,400 square feet and 1,500 square feet. I would point out that they're probably on very small lots, and from a density standpoint, what we're proposing is far smaller in density than what they have existing. So it's not, you know, it's an if, it's not, it's not a direct comparison, it's if this, then that. You know, we're talking about one house over near Ridgway on 10 acres. That's not, we're not talking about massive mansions, we're talking about 3,500 square feet and maybe smaller. So, I mean, it doesn't, you know, I think everybody has their level of acceptance. I'm thinking that we can find, come to an agreement that works for everybody. Traffic, traffic is an issue everywhere in California. We all have traffic issues. The number of cars that are going up and down there right now is exacerbated by the number of people using the trails. I don't anticipate that that's going to get smaller if we approve, if this is approved and the trails are public trails. I don't think it's going to get more, I don't know. I don't know how to deal, we will have to do a traffic study, that'll all be involved. If there is some impact that needs to be mitigated, there will be suggestions. If that, those suggestions are not acceptable, either in cost to me or to you, the Planning Commission, then it doesn't get approved. And that's the way it works, you know, we live in a system. As far as fire safety, once again, you know, I already spoke to that, you know, we do have to look at that, and we will be looking at that. There is, there are general plan and building ordinance requirements for sprinklers on homes. They have to have a certain flow and pressure. I've talked to Ross Valley and talked to them about what they will need from the main, and I've given those numbers to MMWD, they're looking at it right now. That will be part of our application, and we'll have that information available from the very start, because we want to know before we apply. We don't want to apply for something, spend all this money, and have it not be viable because there's not enough water up there. Habitat, well, I would suggest to you that we're not suggesting, we're not proposing anything that would have any more impact on the habitat than exists there now. And in fact, I suspect that because of elimination of some of the fire, fuel load, and non-native species, it might even be a little bit better, but we're not proposing anything that's going to change the game trails or the traffic patterns or the habitat at all by putting houses on what are existing denuded paths, along an existing road. I don't see that as a big problem, but that, again, will be studied. They do, they do spring and fall zoologicals, because different things are around during spring and fall, and they do a pretty comprehensive hydrological study too. So all those things will be in your hands to look at prior to any approval. The cost of the houses, well, yeah, they're going to be expensive. The discussions amongst myself and my partners are heated sometimes and ongoing as to whether this makes any sense. In order to have houses up there, pay for the infrastructure, pay for the land, put in the fire hydrants and then build the houses for what they're going to be worth, is, it's the fine line, and if we, if some of us didn't want to live in them, we probably wouldn't do it. It's not a good investment. We're not talking about houses that are going to get, you know, the kind of square foot, square foot price that they get in Ross, for example, and that, therein lies the rub. You know, houses in Fairfax, you know, $700, $800 a square foot, brand new at the best, that doesn't give us a lot of room. And so, you know, that's questionable. As far as decreasing the value of the neighborhood, I think that the trails and having that as an open space that's dedicated, that's owned, rather than having it closed off completely, is going to be a benefit. We personally look at it as a benefit, having those trails to the parcels if we do get them approved. And I think that the people who live in the neighborhood should also look at it that way, because the alternative is that, it is very real possibility that if we don't do something or sell it, or sell it to somebody who wants, comes in another proposal, it's a very real possibility that the public has no access. And I think that would impact the value of the homes there as well. As far as, where are we at? Windfall tax. I would suggest to you, there is a windfall tax. It's called development costs, and they're very high. We're talking about in excess of $400,000 in fees before we break ground. Not talking, not to mention all the studies, which are going to be close to a million. And that doesn't, that doesn't speak to the increase in property taxes, which is going to be in excess of $200,000 a year. Now, I realize that the town doesn't get all of those because of the state, and then they give you back what they care to, but it is, it is a significant amount of money that will go towards things like maintaining trails that this town owns in public spaces. We've got, let's see, utilities, we have to go underground, you know that. Nobody puts anything underground anymore. It's not code, it doesn't make sense, and it's ugly. Everything goes underground. And to the extent that we are able, and keep in mind, we're not talking about, you know, a high-density subdivision here where you have to have huge underground vaults and everything. We have eight houses on one side, two of them, two of which are very close to the street, to the existing street, and one on another side. We're not, you know, this is not going to be a huge industrial, you know, what do they call them, those electrical parks where they have fences around them, they have all the wires coming, nothing like that's going to be going on here. I'm trying to, can you remember anything else there, Jim? I'm trying to make sure I covered everything.
One item that kept coming up was, is the road public or private? What kind of access would the public have to that?
You know, I can discuss it with my partners if the town wants to make it a public road. If that's the case, and if they're, I don't know that they're agreeable, I have no problem with it, but that requires that the town invest quite a lot more money, because a public road is built to a much higher standard than a private road, and that's going to cost a lot. Not to mention the fact that then the town is liable for accidents and things like that that are on that road. So that's a cost and a decision that the town would have to make. I think I could get that to sell to my partners, but I'm not sure, partly because we wouldn't be paying for it. So, I mean, I, my understanding and my experience with towns is that they don't typically want to pay for that road and take on the liability, but that's certainly something that can be discussed, and I'm not, I don't think, not against it. I mean, I don't know that I can make it fly with my guys, but I'm not against it. Any other questions?
Anyone else?
Anyone remember anything else?
Yeah, how about the road at the top of Ridgeway as opposed to Miranda?
Um, you mean the area that with the slides that they're?
No, you know, where the the fourteen acre parcel is, yeah, right where you're. So right now, um, Mr. Appleton showed us photos of the little trail along there now that people use to hike, actually down where the building area is that you've got on that parcel.
Oh, yeah, that, that's, uh, and it is steep on the side of it, and it's fairly fairly mild here, but it's steep over here.
And there's a trail that kind of goes all the way around, and there's, it goes down to Jolly Hill, which is that little triangular piece at the bottom of that parcel.
We've got this piece.
That's town-owned park, open space.
Oh, yeah.
And so there's a trail that kind of goes up there to the top of the ridge along and leads up to Ridgeway.
Uh-huh. Well, we, we do have enough acreage up here. If that's something that the town wants, that we might be able to incorporate that in, uh, into the trail so you can get from here to there. Um, beyond here is already owned by the town, goes up here.
And the, um, I mean, the little kind of narrow path that's marked as a paper road, I think, currently at the top of Ridgeway.
This up here?
That goes around that edge, yeah, that would be off the property, but which you'd need to turn into a road and potentially a fire truck turnaround.
You're talking about up here or right here?
Well, if you, yeah, right where you're.
So between the gate where it becomes dirt and up to my property line?
Right. Now, that is currently an access point for the public and the neighbors to get onto those trails that take you all the way up to the top.
Mm-hmm.
Or down to Jolly Hill. And so I think that is also an important recreational access point for that community, just FYI.
I don't, uh, I don't think that we would change that. We certainly wouldn't want to. This portion is owned by the town. Um, this portion is owned by the town. The turnaround would be on probably on our property, and this area here would just be a driveway to the one house. Um, as far as getting from, is this the triangle you're talking about? As far as getting from here to here, I think we have enough acreage to provide a trail there if that's something that you that would interest the town. So I don't see a problem with that. Um, I don't think that it's going to impact this building site. And again, I have to talk to my partners, but I can tell you already that it doesn't bother me to be able to ride my bike all the way down around and to get right down to town rather than go through Ridgeway. Um, I don't think it's going to impact this house significantly if there's a trail up here along the property line and goes right up to here. That's not going to be a problem. So we have the acreage, so we can certainly provide that. That's not a bad idea, actually.
Okay, any, any other items that any we think Mr. Rothman missed? Or does anyone have any follow-up questions for Mr. Rothman?
I just have a question. Can you please tell us again where Spirit Circle is on that map right there? Okay, that's what I thought.
I have, I have one last question. Marshall, I believe it's the last meeting and maybe at the public session on October twenty-second, you said that you would offer up the property for sale for three million bucks to a non-developer or the town.
Yes, and that stands.
It's still good.
It's still good. It, um, I did say that that we would want to put on top of that cost, anything that we expended between then and now, then and when it was purchased. And right up to this point, I've been making the maps and I won't charge anybody, but but we're getting ready to start spending some serious money. So if that's something that the town is interested in, sooner the better. Because when, once we start designing houses and things, we're talking forty, fifty thousand dollars per house for the packages. Uh, we're talking ten thousand dollars per lot, first building site for cores. We're talking about a hundred thousand. Yeah, more like two fifty, I think, or I hope, or maybe four or five hundred thousand. It could be easily be four or five hundred thousand. I've seen, it depends on how extensive it is, and I've seen them go that high. I've got, um, we've budgeted two fifty, I hope it's not four hundred. I, we've got a hundred thousand dollars in surveying, and these are all things before we make the application. Um, we've got, we have to do some, um, some, we have photo montages. The list is endless. It'll, you know, there's millions of dollars going to go out.
So if George Lucas is out there listing right now, right now, it's three million bucks.
Yeah, right now, it'd be a good time for him to step up.
Through the chair, I would just like to add a comment that all of these analysis and studies that Mr. Rothman is talking about is the work that needs to be done to answer a lot of the questions that the residents, the community have brought up. So it's not that, uh, he's trying to skirt the answer, not not respond. It's that it will take several months for him to move through his process, a very expensive and elaborate process to come up with the answers and to know exactly how this application might come together if, in fact, it is even feasible. So just, I think that might be a good thing for people to keep in mind.
That's, yeah, it's absolutely correct. We, you know, we, we have not made an application till now, and we've had these study sessions simply and precisely because we don't want to spend the money and make an application that isn't going to be possible. And and so we need to find, we want to, wanted to hear some of the issues and the red flags. We want to gauge the public's willingness. We want to see what we could do, and we've gone, come a long ways. Um, we're not trying to, you know, slide anything by anybody. We want to know ourselves. It may turn out that we don't feel it's viable by the time we do these studies, you know? It may turn out that we we go in a different direction. Um, but you're absolutely correct. Nothing is going to be approved until those studies are done.
Any other follow-up questions, Mr. Rothman? Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation.
And Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank the folks that showed up from the community tonight. This is how the process should work. Thank you so much for coming and being a part of it. Yeah, I think we can.
All righty, so we'll move on to the next item.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just going to talk over the noise for a second, if that's okay. Okay, so we're on number four, and I think this could be a very easy decision point for you guys. Just, it's a very simple question. We've talked a lot about the reduced plans, the large plans. You even have a smaller DIES now. So Linda wanted to know, you know, do you want the eleven by seventeen plans and/or the, um, submittal to also require electronic plan submittal?
Go ahead. I have a question. You know, I didn't specify eleven by seventeen. I was talking about eleven by twenty, or I'm sorry, eighteen by twenty-four, which is half the size of what we normally get. It could be eleven by seventeen, but I wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, the problem with, the problem with the, uh, the larger format is we can't print it.
Okay.
Eleven by seventeen, we can print on ledger.
So can I ask a question? Who, who prints everything?
Usually the applicant does, but when we get a small copy, we have the capability of making more copies.
Oh, I see. So you have a copier, large format copier? Got it?
Yes.
So, okay.
Um, excuse me, could, could the members of the public who still want to discuss, can they please go outside?
Hey, you got, you got that gavel. Use it. Use it.
Mr. McIntosh, everybody, can you guys keep it down so we can?
Outside, please.
Here, thank, thanks.
No, you don't have to leave. We just want to be able to hear ourselves speak.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have a, just a few items left, so we're going to try to roll right through so we can end soon.
Okay, so.
Through, oh, through, through the chair, I have a comment on, um, the size of the plans. I think the eleven by seventeen, which is what we have before us now, is a decent size for most projects. It may not be sufficient when we get something the size of the wall property in, but for most of the smaller, single-family homes we see, I would be happy with this and also ask the applicant to submit an electronic copy and one full-size copy for staff so that when we have questions, because sometimes it's difficult to see, we could go in and take a look at it as needed. Or if we have it electronically, we can blow up the section on our computers.
Also, I forgot to mention one thing, and this might be a little difficult to get people used to it, but if you decide to go this direction on electronic and smaller, they, it's important to put a real scale on the drawings because it's not going to be one-eighth inch equals a foot or one-quarter inch. So what you want is a calibrated line that's showing you the real scale. Madam Chair, I'm sure understands that. She's an architect. So I guess this is an easy boat.
Go ahead, Mimi.
Yeah, I'd also, I guess, want to get a magnifying glass with the packet.
Well, yeah, for, for us, I mean, I read better without my glasses and all this. So, you know, um, the real problem is here on the DIES is, is when we have these huge things, I mean, we almost have to, like, share it. Um, so it'd be good to have that size, yet, you know, at home, I don't mind draping it over my kitchen table and looking at it, so.
So it sounds like maybe we should have at least one full-size set of plans and then, I mean, to have on call if you wanted to come in and look at them. And then if any of you want to stay with the larger plans, we would just say to the applicant, we need one to have on hold, and we have two commissioners, three commissioners that still request a large, and then for the rest of you, because it is an onerous requirement to ask for fourteen sets of large plans. We get a lot of blowback from people. It costs a lot of money, a lot of collation. So we're just, you all had brought this up in the past, and we're just doing the housekeeping and bringing it back to you.
Well, just to be clear, my comment, this size is fine, really. And and having an electronic in addition would be terrific because then if you can't see the tiny nuance here, you could see it on the electronic.
And you could bring a laptop if you wanted to, too. Yes, but you don't want that.
I think, I think it's good to have the full-size copy because there's, it's, it is difficult to read when it's half, half the size, but it is, um, useful on the DIES. So I agree with, um, Phil's comments regarding electronic copy. Um, I think it's useful for a presentation, but the applicant would have that option if they wanted to, to have a presentation such as Mr. Rothman did or any other applicant. That would be available to them if they wanted to do that, right?
Yeah.
And and also, if they submit a full-size plan to staff, where we could come to the office and look at it and then also bring it here.
Exactly.
So that we could take a look, pass it around, instead of everybody trying to elbow each other to get a look at something up here.
And in a perfect world, we would actually put them on the wall also, but we'll see how we can do.
So I, I, as part of the discussion, but I, I prefer the smaller size myself and the electronic copy, presumably in PDF format, because you don't require, I mean, we all have PDF software and you can scale it up. So I think those are, that's a great direction to go.
So Madam Chair, perhaps you could poll and see how many folks would like to still get a big set, a big set?
Okay, who likes full-size set?
The architect.
Only me? Okay, um, the eleven by seventeen size.
With the?
With electronic.
Yeah, with elec.
Well, we're going to do the PDF as a, that will be, so eleven by seventeen.
Good.
All right, so that's.
And I'll ask Shelley offline.
Okay, and then, um, electronic copy. Okay, well, I think it would be useful to have the electronic copy also be posted as part of, like, the staff report. Others, I know other cities such as San Anselmo have that.
Excellent idea.
The public then has a chance to review them as well.
Excellent, excellent idea, yeah. Okay.
And the one full-size set for staff and to bring here.
I got it, I got it. The chair and staff, and we'll bring it to the, to the meeting. I think we're there. So can I make a recommendation on the minutes? Can we hold those over till the next meeting?
Okay. Does anyone have any objections to that?
No objection. I'd like to make a motion to.
I actually had a question. I was wondering if we had an update on the traffic study?
I'm sorry, which, I'm drawing a blank.
The, the traffic study for Sir Francis Drake by San Anselmo, the traffic light study. The one that Shelby, I think, requested.
Oh, that was a while back.
Shelby, sorry, Shelby.
And we did get an update on that. We, we did. That was quite a while back, and maybe when she comes back, she can fill you in because she was tasked to talk with them, and there was some issue with the coordination of the lights and the section that she was interested in. So I think she can report to us, and I'll give her heads up to that effect.
I have a, um.
By the way, I think you're on the last item, Commissioner Comments and Requests.
Yeah, um, a follow-up to what Esther was saying. I've, I've had, um, comments from residents who live in the Willow neighborhood that they think that the light has changed. They noticed that they have to wait longer. Is there, is there any basis to that?
I don't know. I will, I will ask the town manager who sits on our very obtuse, um, traffic committee, see if anything changed. I don't think so, though. It might be just the, the traffic impacting the signaling of the light. I don't know.
Um, I have just some, some comments. Some of us commissioners attended a planning commissioners', um, League of Cities of Cali, Planning Commissioners Academy sponsored by the League of Cities of California. I might say that was an eye-opener, and I thank the town for sponsoring us who attended that. Um, there's, now, because of that, though, there's, we're going to be a little more strict up here, perhaps. Um, so that's point one. Point two is, one of the things they had a course on was data and its usage in planning. And we would love to see the data on that traffic study. It's on my list before you even mentioned it. I mean, I think this is something we need to see. Where is traffic coming? It's a huge issue. Almost everybody out here with the wall property had an issue with traffic. So we want to know what's happening with it and how we're going to manage it, and it all has to do with parking as well.
May I? So if you recall in the fall, we had actually hoped to hold a traffic forum, and the prior fall, we'd actually done some traffic counts with Parisian Associates. Never happened because of the load of other things that came down on us. We are planning in the first workshop for the Town Center Plan in, you'll get a briefing book, and you'll get presentations, and one of the presentations we hope to have is a small condensed version of the traffic presentation from Mr. Parisi. But before that, we'll get you the results and the data from the traffic study, and I'll ask Shelley to give us an update on what she found out from their Public Works Director, Sean Condry.
Thank you. Well, one more comment. When we get to the B-to-B issue, you know, originally I said I didn't think we should regulate it, but when we get there, be aware that Airbnb, for example, will collect a TOT and process it to our town. I've studied their website. They will do this. They have a facility. Makes it very easy for an owner like that couple, I heard them, you know, they, they, they need it to keep the house, make a little income, and they don't mind the people living in their home. So, but there was an issue with, you know, they were concerned about the TOT. It's very easy to do. It's really paid for by the tenant, and and it, they, it can be processed, just like they said some of their other taxes are through this facility. So I think we should take a look at that before the forum, before the public forum, get some data from each of the societies online that do this, and present how easy that is. Because to me, that's the issue is the TOT, income to the town, et cetera.
Well, we'll, we'll have many discussions on this, and it's a very complicated subject in terms of its impacts and benefits.
Very true. Very true.
And then, one comment, since Commissioner Green brought it up, the, I would love to have gone to the planning conference. If someone who, who went could give us a synopsis, you know, the highlights, news, the biggest news or changes or recommendations, that would be really helpful at one of our upcoming meetings.
Well, let me, let me say, I go the nine yards. When, when I attended, I, they had a form that you could turn in to get on a monthly phone call forum, and I'm going to do that. I'm going to, every, they're like three o'clock once a month. I've been through one, but it was all about the, the program and, and how people reacted to the program, but it's terrific, because it brings up new bills that are pending and what impact they may have on, on planning. And here, and I'll, I'll give these to you if you like, I have two terrific printouts, they, they have PDFs. I don't know if we could distribute these to everybody, but we have PDFs. So one was ironclad findings and effective conditions of approval, terrific course.
Send them to me.
Okay. And the other was planning fundamentals, which a new planner here would really benefit by. So I think maybe it, the town council could consider really recommending at the beginning of a new commissioner's stint that they attend this.
Yeah, and next year, we'll hopefully get the other four of you to attend. It's a pretty nickel, it's 575 bucks, not counting lodging, which we fortunately didn't have to cover.
But if we could get copies of that.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Just an FYI, next year it's in Southern California.
Ah, that's going to be very expensive.
Yeah, at LAX.
Okay, so, anyone, anything else, or do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, I do have one, one item I'd like to say that, I just received an email that Graywater Action will be sending one of their staff people to our April meeting, April 21st, where we will have a discussion about gray water systems, the philosophy of gray water and systems, and that also could be an opportunity to talk about the new codes. I would like to meet with staff in the next 10 days, so that we can talk about how to incorporate and integrate both the code and the gray water techniques and systems, which could be over a two-month period, but that's something that I think the community could be very interested in over the next couple of months.
Right, and we got your email about meeting, and we'll, we'll set it up for next week, because I'm going on vacation for two weeks on Easter, which is a week from Sunday.
Risk after that, so.
Great, thank you. Hey, and by the way, I'd like to recommend Norma, if anytime she wants to handle the clock, she is great at telling people their time is up.
On, on the water issue, I've run into, Larry Bragman works in an office near where I work, and I've run into him a lot, we have these little sidewalk chats, but he would love to attend especially a meeting that we're dealing with water. I mean, he's, he's on the MMWD board, and I think that would be a, inviting him might be a good idea.
Sure, thank you.
Are we going to need to move to postpone approval of the minutes to the next meeting?
I think it already was, I think you decided on it.
Then I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, you need to adjourn.
Good meeting, thank you all so much.
Thank you, too.